Yeah, there's no public comments. There wasn't a process for folks to join anyway. And people will still be able to watch it on YouTube per agenda, just not live.
So let's proceed.
Yeah, let's proceed, and if we need to ratify later, we can.
I am opening this meeting as the Grand County Council's special meeting. It is Thursday, May 28, 2020. Council members that are present are Gabriel Wojtek, Brad Halliday, Evan Clapper, and Jaylen Hawks. We also have our attorney, Christina Sloan, and our clerk auditor Quinn Hall. We will begin the meeting with a presentation by the southeastern Utah Health Department on coronavirus. Brady?
Good morning, everybody. Let's see if I can, well, first of all, talk about what's happening right now essentially in Grand County. As if you've been following, you know, our website and some of the updates put out, then you have recognized that we have seen an increase in the number of cases diagnosed in Grand County. Now up to, I believe, five in the last week, which in itself is certainly caused to raise the eyebrows at the very least and wonder what's going on. And is this a result of loosening of restrictions and statewide and nationwide? Probably there is some element of that. Epidemiologically speaking, actually, however, there, there's not a whole lot of cause for alarm yet, so to speak. Three of those cases are family members that were in very close contact with each other and had traveled out of state. One case is someone that came in to work seasonally and was tested as they began that job. And another case is not a resident of Moab, but on the outskirts of Grand County. So initially, we do know the genesis of their infections. It doesn't, we don't have a lot of rampant community, unidentified community spread at the moment, even though we have seen an uptick in cases. And frankly, we saw a little bump in Carbon and Emery as well. That bumped up for about a week and then now has seemed to at least temporarily slow down again. If I have the ability. So the last time I presented, there were several questions about, well, what are the metrics used to determine if we're going to go from red to orange, orange to yellow, or back again? We now have more clarification on exactly what those are and some of the numbers. And this is something that is updated daily, and I can send this to the council for review later. But I'll just pass on to you what we know now. And first of all, as we kind of mentioned, mentioned earlier, again, it's about a month ago, we're looking at hospital utilization rates. And that includes what's, what's happening in the ICUs and what is happening in the non ICU beds. And we now have the ability to do that as a, as a health district. We can break it down by county specific, and we look at the state as a whole as well. So I've got Grand County pulled up right now, and this is one area where we actually, we have data because of Moab Regional Hospital. They're reporting to this dashboard site. And Moab Regional, for the past two plus weeks, has had no utilization of their intensive care unit at all. And their bed usage has remained below 47%. And the goal is really to remain below 60% statewide. And certainly, as is projected here, they're, they don't even project to get to 90% at least statewide. And so that is one element that statewide, the governor and the commissioner are taking into account. Certainly, at Moab Regional, that is, you know, we can go from 0% utilization to 100% in a couple of hours, certainly. So growth rate is essentially the term they're using for the RNOT or the transmission rate of the disease. Right now, we do not have enough disease, enough data points in Grand County to, to calculate this. Statewide, it has, they, we are certainly going for a rate below one. And we, and they're, we are paying attention to see, does the rate double in seven days or less? Those are two key indicators, one on the positive side, one on the negative side. And in Utah, once again, Grand County just doesn't have the data for this. But in Utah, as for example, on April 1st, this data probably is not super accurate. They had the proxy transmission rate at 4.61, so four and a half people being coming infected for every one person that had the disease. That quickly drops off and, and has hovered basically between 1.1 and 0.8 for the past three to four weeks. Right now statewide, we're at about 1.02. So that's the, and again, the goal is to get that below one and to make sure that the rate doesn't double within seven days. And once again, we don't have data for that in Grand County because of lack of cases. A third metric that we're looking at is how, how, what's our ability to monitor and detect for disease? Statewide, the target is to do 4,000 to 6,000 tests per day. There has been a significant drop off in the number of people requesting tests statewide. Right now, in Grand County, this is actually something that we have a little bit better idea of what's happening locally. We're well over, we're nearing about 1,400 tests in Grand County. You know, this not counting repeat tests, of course, but you know, just as a crude rate, about 14% of the population, which is very, very impressive. The hospital done a great job with that, and we are, there are additional measures we are looking at to maintain that over the next month. One is they will, we will continue to reach out to higher risk asymptomatic populations, see if we can identify disease. And yesterday, we had conversations with UPHL's, the Utah Public Health Labs Mobile Testing Unit to have that come to Grand County to perhaps reach some of the population that hasn't had the opportunity to get to the hospital. So the metric there is really, do we have the ability to test who we need? And the answer right now is yes. And then finally, exposure source. So the metric is, we want infections to basically come from known contacts for more than 85% of our, our cases in the last seven to 14 days. And certainly, once again, when you're not dealing with a whole lot of cases, those percentages can, can vary quite a bit. For example, in Grand County, the week of April 20th to 26th, we had two cases and 100% of them came from known contacts. In our last, in our current group, we have one that's still under investigation and all the rest of them have come from known contacts. So, so right now, we, that is still trending very well. We do have a case that popped up April 27th to May 3rd in that week. That was community spread. We never did determine where that came from. That, I believe, is the only case so far in Moab that we haven't been able to determine. And then state, so generally, we're hovering near 100%. It's at about 90% for Grand County. That's over the past month, though, not just the past seven days. And then within the state, the rate they're seeing is about 66%. Then certainly, there are economic indicators. Know that claims skyrocketed statewide, particularly in Grand County. They shot up, it was, Grand County was the highest unemployment claims there for, at least for a while. It has dropped off significantly as things have opened up, but still, still ongoing numbers are fairly high. There are not defined numbers associated with that. It, the questions that the state is asking are how many people are out of work? Are claims increasing or decreasing from week to week? And how does it compare over historic trends? So those are, that's a summary of our metrics. Again, I apologize, we don't have sufficient to really give you great data. But understanding what the state is looking at. Now, finally, I've gone on for quite a while, but in regards to ongoing regulations or, or rules in Grand County, we submitted what is essentially the proposed regulation for Grand County ongoing, starting on May 29th. We submitted that, I submitted that last Friday. I had a conversation last night with General Jefferson Burton. He is right now our liaison to the governor's office. In essence, based on data review, we indicated that Grand County will be transitioned to the yellow phase beginning on Friday. And we're very interested in, in the discussion and possible vote of the council on continue, the modified but continuing lodging restrictions in the area. There was a sense that I got that the, the governor's office is wondering if this is, these are measures imposed solely by the health department or if there is still cooperation and collaboration with county government. And if, if the, the county council votes in favor, there is a possibility, I believe, that the governor will support that variance request. Though just to pass along, it seems like there is a little bit of impatience with the idea of restricting lodging on a continued basis. And that's, I understand, reading into a little bit of the conversation I had, but passing on to you as much as I know at this time. And so with that, are there any questions?
Yeah, I, Mary, if I may? This is Evan. I guess I've heard in the news a lot about in other parts of the country, transmission being related more to where you live than where you work. And I was, I haven't seen any data around these cases that we're having in Grand County, if there's any clusters there. And so if, if there's been a neighborhood or anything that's been identified as more high risk and on a similar sort of thing, when you're saying that we don't have enough data to go off of, sorry, my wife's making breakfast. If we don't have enough data to go off the testing, that if there's any kind of effort to promote more tests being utilized? And if there's a reason that those aren't being tested, I imagine that's mostly cost related. And if there's any efforts to offer testing at a decreased rate.
So we, in answer to your first question, we really, up till the last case, well, three cases that are kind of a family group, not necessarily one family unit, but a family group. That's really our first, what we consider outbreak. Right now, an outbreak is, is two cases or more that are, that are related. So there isn't anything to indicate apart from that, that there, there is in Grand County a specific high-risk neighborhood or, or occupation. And then in regards to testing, we do have quite a bit of data. Like I said, we're, we're nearing 1,400 tests in Moab. When I say that, that it doesn't show up on the state's website when I pull out Grand County, that's, that's generally because the algorithms they're using right now, which are not super refined, but are continually being refined. They're looking for numbers in the hundreds and thousands per day. And we're still testing in the range of 20 to 50 per day. Now, on an accumulated basis, that's, that's added up now. We're, is a district about 2,500, and Grand County makes up more than 50% of those tests right now. But going back to how we're going to continue to promote that, one is with our asymptomatic groups, the hospital is using a less invasive testing procedure that can happen with a nasal swab instead of the nasopharyngeal that feels like your brain's getting gouged out. The nasal swab is not quite as accurate, but it is still accurate enough to understand with an asymptomatic population. If, it's still accurate enough to catch those that may be transmitting unknowingly. So having those groups understand that it's not super invasive and being tested once doesn't mean that you're done. They can go through a rotation depending on their exposure or their, their type of employment that would allow them to continually understand what their risk has been. And then once again, bringing down the mobile unit. And we're going for a trial run in, in probably the next three weeks. And if that's successful, we'll schedule them regularly. Those tests are free. And we have the ability to make, you know, anybody that, certainly anybody that the health department contacts and sends in for a test. All of those tests are free as well. People that voluntarily show up, there is the ability to bill insurance if they have it. But, but right now, if they're mandated to take a test based on exposure or they're in quarantine or something like that, then those tests are free.
Mary? I've got a, I got a question for him. Brandon, how many total cases do we have now? And how many people are recovered?
What statewide, locally?
No, just, just, just county.
Okay. Right now, we have four active cases that we're following and five recovered cases. So a total of nine that we've.
So we got, we got a total of nine. Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
I have two questions, Brady, and thanks for all this information. It's really great. I'm hoping you can give us an update on where the antibody testing is and how many people have tested positive for the antibodies. And also, each of our weekends in May have gotten busier and busier, leading up to a very busy Memorial Day weekend. So how long will it take for us to see the, the impact of our Memorial Day weekend? Can you give us like a timeframe for when you expect, if we were to get community transmission as a result of all that? Tourism, what that timeframe looks like?
Yeah, so I'm going to do some quick math here. The number of reported antibody tests as of last night is 341. We have data, or 339. We have information back on 317 of those. Not a whole lot of positives in that group. Let me quickly count somewhere around. Oh, hey.
Hey.
Hi, Jen.
How are you? We have, we have 12 positive antibody tests out of, are you looking at yesterday's dashboard, Brady?
Oh, yeah, and it's actually, I had opened the wrong one. We're looking at 367.
Yeah, my most recent dashboard is 390 tests, 12 positive. Not all of those 390 have been returned. It's about 3% positive rate. And that's if they're all true positives.
Thanks, Jen. So what we do know about antibody testing is that it becomes more accurate the more people in a community have the disease. So right now, there, there is possibility of false positives and false negatives in, in these results. And this is really just helping us to get a picture of what may be happening. And Jen, I hope I didn't speak too much about testing and insurance and things like that. If you want to clarify, feel free to do that, but I'll answer Christina's second question. Most people start to show symptoms after about five days. So that would put us, you know, starting this weekend. What we're finding, though, is those people that we've tested, generally taking them a few days to decide that they really need to be tested. So their, their symptoms start and maybe day two or three, they get tested and then it takes another 48 hours. So oftentimes, we are getting information about about a week after their symptoms start, which puts us, you know, getting information about what happened over Memorial Day anywhere from eight to 12 days, eight to 14 days out. That's when we'll start to see something.
So I have a question, Mary? For?
Yeah. Well, at 9:27? Yes, Jaylen?
Okay, yeah, I just, I'll have to confess, I didn't go through this order with a fine-tooth comb comparing it to the guidelines on the website, the governor's website. So basically, though, as I understand it, the only variation that Grand County is asking, variance, is asking for is in the area of overnight accommodations. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, and, and that's true, but also there's still some camping restrictions on BLM land, and that is requested by BLM, and we included a letter of support for that.
That, that's true. BLM has indicated that typically, at this point in the year, they operate at 50% capacity anyway. They close their campgrounds that have gates. So this really, in essence, ends up being returned to normal operations for them compared to previous years.
Any further questions? Thank you, Brady. Thank you very much. We will move we will move to the report from the hospital. Jen?
Morning, everybody. Thank you for asking me to be here. Brady covered a lot of the testing information, so I appreciate that, Brady. You didn't step on my toes by any means. I'm glad you're here. In terms of where we're at at the hospital, we have one final project, HVAC project to turn our trauma bays into negative pressure areas. That begins next week. It'll take about a week to finish that. And then we'll basically be as geared up as we can be. We have the ability to hold about 20 to 23 patients in our, in our main part of our hospital. And then if we needed to, we could expand to about 21 additional patients in our medical office building in kind of a barrack-style setting. But that plan and the supplies and equipment that we need for that is all ready to go. We've resumed elective surgeries. We've resumed seeing more patients in our clinic and in our urgent care. We have moved our respiratory evaluation area to the front of the building. That gives us the ability to keep it in that spot without using a tent or the we are continuing to have our employees work from home. And I, I know this is something that's come up in a lot of places of, when's the right time to bring employees back on site? We have decided that for our organization, until we sort of see how things play out with our tourist economy opening back up, it's better to keep fewer people in the building and minimize the potential for transmission or exposure. So we'll, we'll continue to have employees work from home. We're doing that on a month-to-month basis. I don't know if county, all county employees are working from home, but I thought you might be interested in that. And other than that, the emergency room, it ramped back up to just about where it is normally on Memorial Day weekend. So we didn't see, we didn't see any difference in volume there from, you know, if there was a reduction in tourism over this Memorial Day weekend, which there probably was from previous years, it was unnoticed in our emergency room. And then finally, we had a call with the University of Utah medical director yesterday, and he referenced an article that I asked Chris Baird to forward onto the council by Atul Gawain, who is a great writer and makes, he's a physician who's also a great writer. And he talks a little bit about things that we can do in terms of slowing transmission rate. And right now, you know, in terms of testing and tracing, the hospital and health department have really had a great partnership, and that's going on, I think, pretty much robustly as, you know, it could be. We even have more capacity that we're trying to fill right now with getting asymptomatic people in, participate in the testing. So that piece is taken care of. The, the piece, you know, that is important to constantly remind our community of and to be example of as leaders in the community is hand hygiene, wearing masks, and social distancing. And, you know, we don't just turn the spigot back on full force. It's important to keep those three other pieces in mind as part of that. And in the article that was forwarded, he really talks about promoting, you know, a culture of taking care of each other. That, you know, when we wear masks, we don't wear masks for ourselves. We wear them for other people. And so, you know, when we as a community cultivate a culture of protecting each other, caring for each other, caring for our economy by slowing the transmission rate, that's an important step. And so I just, you know, from the physicians at our hospital, we cannot encourage our community leaders enough to promote that culture of taking care of each other through wearing of masks in public spaces where we can, where social distancing just cannot happen.
I have a question, Jen. So you are starting work the negative pressure area next week, and then So you are starting work, the negative pressure area next week, and then it will be ready a week from then? So is it like not two weeks from now that it will be ready or? Did I understand that correctly?
So we have a lot of negative pressure areas that we've already transformed. This is just our final one to transform our trauma base into negative pressure areas. And the reason we want to do that switch is that we anticipate that in the future we'll get people who, as transmission does, you know, increase, we might get a car accident who's COVID positive. So we want to have all of our trauma areas be automatically negative pressure. So that it's not pulling virus, especially if they're intubating trauma, that they're not, that's a, intubation is a, is a highly aerosolizing procedure. So a virus gets released into the air. So if we can turn our trauma base into that, into a negative pressure, then we don't risk that virus being sucked into the areas around the trauma base. So it's the final construction project for us to complete, and it should take between a couple of days to a week. Currently we have another space set up to care for people in the ER. But we, we just needed to have some more zones so that we have some flexibility. The other space that we're caring for trauma patients who may be COVID positive at this point in time is our post op, post operative area. And as we've resumed elective surgeries, we want to be able to put that back into use for surgery, not just traumas.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question?
I do, Mary. I have one.
Greg?
Yeah. When you get people into the ER trauma cases, do you automatically assume that they're positive for COVID? And also how long does it take to get results back from a test?
So we, that's a good question. All of our providers and nurses are wearing full PPE in the assumption that anybody who walks through the door could be COVID positive. So they wear, they wear basically a surgical mask and and goggles. That's called droplet protection. And then if they're doing aerosolizing procedures, they would switch to, you know, full N95 or pepper system in order to protect themselves. Let's see, what was your second part of your question?
Yeah, how long does it take to get results back on a test?
So for the tests that we're running through the state laboratory and or, you know, that are testing for people who are symptomatic, those usually take about 48 hours to get back. We also have a limited number of onsite rapid tests. We wish we could use those for every person we tested, but they're pretty hard to get our hands on right now. So we have, those take less than 30 minutes. So if we do get a trauma and we can screen somebody, or if we, if we're doing an emergency surgery, if we're doing things like that, we can screen people immediately. I know we received some or some were shipped to us yesterday. We have less than 100 of those tests, so we use those pretty sparingly on, on OB patients, emergency surgery, trauma, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We will move to the action items. Approving Grand County and Southeastern Utah Health District joint amended public health order effective May 29th, 2020. Brady? Or Christina?
Well, Chris isn't here, so he asked me to present with Brady. So Brady, I'll jump in and feel free to supplement. And Orion is on the phone too and is well versed in all of this. The big changes here are the continued opening for lodging. So the initial number of units was 20 per facility. That has increased to 75. And then based on the size of the lodging facility, the, the percentages increased from there. So that is quite a large opening compared to our pure orange status. We also clarified the face covering requirement in section two. There was a lot of confusion in the first draft. This does still come from the executive orders coming out of the governor, and he has continued to keep the face covering requirement in place for employees of businesses to work with the public. This right now is set to expire June 25th. So you have heard the governor's office would like us to, would like to see us go to yellow, but it sounds like he will still honor the council's desire to keep us in some modified form. This does require a review in the interim in section five, which is going to put us right at that week of June 8th, which is the timeframe that Brady said we're likely to see the impact of our busy Memorial Day weekend. So I do encourage the council to approve this as written. We'll have that review anyway in the interim and we'll submit it to the governor. If you guys approve it and see what he does from there. Brady or Orion, do you guys want to jump in with any other details?
Just the, the plan for today is their office asked me to get back to them after this meeting with the results of the discussion and vote. The governor, I think, is planning on having an announcement at 11:00. This could be part of that. So there is the possibility that the council approves it. And the governor may reject it, and so it would be overwritten, but my sense is if the council approves it, it will be approved at the governor's level, but you never know.
Presentation, if anyone has questions.
I had a question about the number of rooms versus establishments. I'm actually unfamiliar of how many of our establishments in the county have over 75 rooms? Is that something you know off the top of your head?
Orion's the guy to give us that info.
She's putting in the hot seat, Orion.
Here we go. I would say that many of our, of our lodging establishments do have more than 75 rooms. There's still quite a few that don't have that many, but we have facilities that exceed 200 rooms. But I couldn't tell you exactly not all of them, but I've been communicating with some lodging establishments to understand what their occupancies are at currently. I've heard back from a few of them and it's looking like somewhere in the 70%, 70 to 75% occupancy already booked up going forward. And I believe that with the proposed occupancy limits, that, that shouldn't affect those current reservations all too much. So I think it actually kind of aligns with what's already happening. It just would prevent some big surge.
Thanks for that.
Do we have any other questions?
Yes.
Curtis.
Curtis?
I, I didn't see an attachment this morning for the packet. I got the email, but there wasn't an attachment. But my question is, how will this affect the, the limitation, or I guess that window of, I think it was, we landed it somewhere like 24 hours between bookings. How is that impacted by this?
That has not changed. So there's still a 24 hour rest period.
And what, what is that 24 hour rest period in the yellow guidelines by the state? No?
I don't think so. Is that correct, guys?
I'll take a look real quick.
Yeah, I, I don't think it is either, but I want to confirm because it changes.
Right, so agreed.
So you're confirming that?
He's confirming that Orion is, and while he does that, I, one more point I wanted to make, of course, is the parks are reopening on Friday. And by continuing at this modified level, that would also help us potentially manage numbers. We don't know what that looks like. It's going to be really hot this weekend. The park is going to be, and we'll learn more from the Park Service tomorrow in our special meeting, but they are going to be limiting the capacity of their numbers going into the park. I don't know if y'all have been following those numbers across the west, but it's been somewhat of a disaster and parks are just getting overwhelmed. Zion's has been shutting down at 6:30, 7:00 AM every morning because they're getting overwhelmed. So I think that our percentage capacity shows there's some hesitancy still for folks to travel. And yet the park's opening is, is going to bring more people. And so keeping us here makes a lot of sense until we can see what that looks like in Grand County, in my opinion.
I did not find anything related to the 24 hours in yellow phase.
Yeah, it, it does look like that part got removed. But just for information for the orange and red phases, the phase guidelines actually suggested 48 hours.
Okay, what? I got a dumb question. What's the duration of this amended order again? I don't see it in the agenda summary and I.
It's in section five and it says, "The order shall expire June 25th at 11:59 PM, but will be subject to review in the interim," which, which is that week of June 8th would be our interim week.
Sorry, I, I missed the, the 24 hour rest period. I'm seeing that in section three. Are you saying that that's a variance that we're requesting or that that is?
Yes, it is not in the phase guidelines for yellow, so that's why this is this modified request.
Gotcha.
So did we, was there an attachment for the packet this morning? Because the email I got, there's no attachment that shows the actual amended order.
Yeah, I got one.
Mallory said two, one with definitely attachment that I got, and then the second one had my agenda summary in it. And I actually didn't open that one, but I think it was attached.
It was attached in the one, yes, it was attached.
The one at 8:09, on my end, there's no attachment for some reason.
I can probably resend it. I can find it.
Mary, Mary, can I ask another quick? Can I ask another quick? Okay, go ahead.
After I answer, Curtis, it was sent at 8:40.
I'm rescinding it to you, Curtis, right now. I don't know that this one for sure has my agenda summary, but it definitely has the order in it. So I just sent that.
I got a reminder, I got a reminder at 8:40 from Mallory with the Zoom link and then a link from Jen from newyorker.com, but it doesn't have the packet.
It should be there. Do you see it? From me just now.
But the, the 24 hour is the same variance that we had in the last one?
It is, and I haven't heard any complaints from lodging facilities about that. Have you, Orion?
No, I have not received any complaints on that. I have heard from, well, we've heard from some cleaning staff and that sort of thing, that they're very supportive of it because they're somewhat scared to go into those rooms. With that 24 hours wasn't in place.
Do they, do they actively air out those rooms during that 24 hours?
Not necessarily, but just that wait time, the, the virus is dying at an exponential rate, therefore lowering that risk through, through the time. But I would hope that when possible, that they would be airing them out, but some of those rooms don't necessarily have windows that open.
Okay.
It's not required that they air it out.
Any further questions?
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Evan.
I move to approve the joint amended public health order for that peach phase to be effective May 29th, 2020.
Motion by Evan Clapper, seconded by Greg Halliday. Seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further question?
Yeah, if I could, if I could just comment. I think that these special restrictions are just really important and sending a message that, that we are on guard still. And we have a community in Grand County that is really unique in, in the way that we're introducing risk by the nature of our economy. And I think, and that comes from visitation, I think largely on a state and regional level. And therefore I think that we deserve respect on the state level to implement these safeguards. I think not maintaining further restrictions sends a message to visitors that the guard is let down. And that, and simply put, not all, some, but not all visitors are, you know, are able to recognize how vulnerable we are as a county because of the nature of our economy. And I think overall, I think for maintaining confidence and in, in safety of our, not of course our residents, but of our visitors and for maintaining ongoing economic activity, I think that these measures are really very, very reasonable at this time.
Thank you, Gabriel. Any further comment? I'll call for a vote. Gabriel?
Aye.
Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Evan Clapper?
Yes.
Jaylen?
Yes.
Curtis Wells?
Nay.
Mary McGan? Motion passes five to one. Curtis Wells in opposition. This concludes, brings us to the end of our agenda. Unless someone objects, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Especially to Brady and Jen and Orion.
Appreciate you guys.
Meeting adjourned at 9:55. Thank you.